Next item, please.
Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the Board on Agenda and Non-Agenda Items for Action who are assigned in by 7:10 by submitting a blue card to the Secretary may speak at this time. The Board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefits of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school, district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. The Board President reserves the right to limit times. The first one is going to be about the BRICS bond, and there are two speakers, Hussein Hashem and Maria Dwyer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Maria Dwyer, and with me is Hussein Hashem, and we are the co-chairs for Citizens for Dearborn Schools, which is an advocacy group which is established to support the upcoming bond. We are also Dearborn Education Foundation Board members, and most importantly, we are parents. And I brought with me today my nine-year-old daughter, who is entering fourth grade at Howard Elementary School here in our district. We want to first thank the Board for your investment and support for this November bond initiative. It's not an easy decision to place on the ballot, and we appreciate all that you do. As Mr. Mustynan mentioned, this bond will cover critical areas. Most important to me, as a parent in this district, are security upgrades. We heard about all the other things that this bond will cover: toilets, roofs, boilers. But the security upgrades, to me, are critical and a very important aspect of this bond. Every single school in the district will receive security upgrades. Last week, the Detroit Free Press reported on a number of other neighboring districts which have recently supported, parents and the voters have supported and approved millions of dollars in security upgrades. These are districts, again, neighboring to us, Lance Cruz, Gibraltar Schools. And a part of that issue is for secure entrances. While I, and likely each of you, can't believe some of the horrible events that we are witnessing across the country, they are real, and I want my daughter and all of our students to be able to focus on education every morning when they enter our schools and not have to worry about secure entrances. So, we appreciate your support, and we thank you. I'm gonna let Hussein say a few words as well.
Thank you, Maria. I remember being in the same room back in 2018 as part of the Infrastructure Task Force, discussing the needs of the district and how we're gonna meet those needs. And I remember coming into this room with the mentality that I am against any new bond, but, you know, seeing beforehand the condition of our buildings, including the buildings, and going to the basements of Lori and other schools, you know, I changed my mind. And I'm sure many of our residents, if they see the buildings and the condition of our buildings, they will do too. As many of you know, we are one of the largest districts in Michigan, having 34 buildings and over 3.2 million square feet of buildings and space that needs to be maintained. And the age of our buildings averaging 65 years old, which 12 building over 90 years, and another 12 building between 60 to 75 years was age they come need. So, this bond, I really believe it's gonna help the district address the critical need. We're not just talking about any need that we can blush under the ground. This is a critical need to operate our buildings and to keep them running. So this bond, I believe, will help us address those critical needs. Other than that, I want to mention that, as a, you know, for anyone that's basically thinking about not voting for the bond, which is like Mary Lane said, probably not a lot. But for you, I have a couple of questions. What are we gonna wait for? Are we gonna wait for our foundations and our roof to fall off? Are we gonna wait for our boilers to shut down on us? Are we gonna wait for an unfortunate incident to happen at our schools to, for us to basically react? I really want to invite our residents and our fellow residents in Dearborn to be proactive, not reactive. We need to act, and we need to make the right decision. Please vote yes to the bond. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is going to be Chastity Townsend, talking about maintaining our schools.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
How are you all this evening?
Good.
So, as you all know, I'm the Executive Director for the Dearborn Education Foundation, and I play a critical role here in this community and our school district by raising funds to help supplement classroom needs, so that our children have the tools and things that they need to learn in our buildings. When we wanna, I understand the importance of having safe buildings for our children to be in. We had an incident in another community where the bleachers came unattached from the wall and injured a kid, actually killing that child. And those are the types of things we don't want to see happen in our schools. So maintaining is, maintaining our buildings is very important. My time with the foundation has proven how community members support schools and how the support has made our schools better. By working with the community organizations and companies and the families here and raising those funds to help supplement classroom needs, I see this stuff firsthand. I do want to thank the Board for bringing this bond, by placing this bond on the ballot. We really appreciate it. And I'm involved with the Bond Committee as well, because education is important to me and the safety of our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Robin Mackled, wishing to speak to the Board about teacher staffing.
Good evening. So my name is Robin Mackled, and I spoke at the last Board meeting. I have children at Duval School. I have a fourth grader, an incoming fourth grader, and a kindergartner. And I also have a seventh grader at LL Smith. So in the last few, in the last month, we've had multiple conversations with administration about split classes and what that's going to mean to our students. First of all, we love our principal, and we love our teachers at Duval. We have the ultimate confidence in them. But we have some concerns over the split classes. Initially, the plan was gonna be three, like our entire third and fourth grades were gonna be split classes, and the numbers were gonna be like 26 or 27 kids per class. Should have behavioral issues and everything in the split classes. Now we've revised things, things have been revised a little bit. The plan is currently for a 2-3 split and a 3-4 split. The 3-4 split will have only seven fourth graders, so it'll be very third-grade heavy. We've gotten a lot of data on the splits, just as a district. I'm told currently the plan is there will be five 3-4 splits across the district, one of those being at Duval. There will be three 2-3 splits in the district, one of those being at Duval. So you're looking at, of all the third graders in the district being affected by split classes, 25% are coming from our small school. And I want you to think about what happens in third grade. So in third grade, it's a very critical grade, because you go from learning to read to reading to learn. If you are not reading by the time third grade is up, you're behind. This is the first year that kids take the M-step, and they take it twice. This is the first year that they actually have to read the NWA themselves rather than having it read to them. There's new proficiency requirements. Now we have these retention requirements by the state. And if you add to that, that you've got shifting teachers who have not taught a particular grade, to now they're gonna be covering that grade in addition to the one they taught before. Add to that brand-new math curriculums, of which now they need to learn two grades' worth of that brand-new math curriculum that's coming in this year. There's no additional PLC time beyond what any other teacher in the district gets, no additional prep time beyond what any other teacher in the district gets, no additional support beyond what any other teacher in the district gets. And you're also subject to strict Common Core and testing, strict testing schedules. I mean, now you've got second graders who aren't taking the M-step in a class with third graders who are taking the M-step, and how is the teacher supporting that? So there's just a lot of concerns that we have. You're asking teachers to differentiate teaching strict Common Core to two different grades when you know there's gonna be behavioral issues. We know that there will be targeted Title I kids affected by these split classes, and we know that there'll be safety issues. So for example, in my son's third grade class last year, my son has very severe anaphylactic food allergies. He's sitting next to a child who actually had such severe behavioral issues that they set a piece of paper on fire in their desk, and the classroom had to be evacuated. So how is a teacher going to differentiate all this, these two separate curriculums and everything that's going on when there's all these other things going on that you're probably not gonna be able to help but have those sprinkled in? And if you are taking the kids that aren't, that don't have those issues and putting those in the split, then what are you left with in the other class, too? You know, we have that concern as well. So we just want to make sure that our third graders are getting the focus and differentiation that they need. I believe that the research is far from clear that there's no negative impact of split classes. I have the presentation, the analysis that was done by Dearborn Public Schools. I read the study, I read the studies that are cited in the study. And our study says that students in split multi-grade classes fare no worse than others in single-grade classes. It aligns itself with the Reiman study that was done in 1995. It was based on data from the '70s through the '90s, doesn't account for strict Common Core curriculum and testing. And I think when we're all talking about, I mean, I was in a split class myself when I was a child, and there were 16 kids in the class. We were very high-achieving, kind of self-directed kids that were all put in there, and it wasn't Common Core. So when we talk about like the experiences that our kids have had in split classes, it might be a little bit different now, right? And just, there's a lot, lot of different things about our society now. And then also, in the Dearborn study, we talked, they talks about a study done by Burnson Mason in 2002, which disagreed with Reiman, and proposed that Reiman did not consider that purposeful assignment of higher-achieving students, smaller class size, and more competent teachers actually balanced out the negative effects that teaching two parallel curriculums created. And our Dearborn study itself acknowledges that the sample size did not support higher and lower grade interactions. So it might analyze fourth graders, but doesn't analyze a fourth grader in a fifth-grade class versus a fourth grader in a third-grade class and how they fare, might fare differently. Also, the study acknowledges strong ignorability, which is that there's other student, teacher, school covariates may influence the outcome. So we have no idea, like, what we're really comparing, if, you know, those were hand-selected students, what the teacher's experience level was, everything else. So I don't think that this study really supports and can honestly say that there's no negative impacts of having a split class. Some of you talked about the Montessori experience, how people pay money for a Montessori class. Well, my kids went to a Montessori preschool. There's a very specific methodology that the teachers are trained in and the teachers employ. There's a very specific setup of the classroom, it's a very specific number of children, there's a very specific prep time and materials and everything that goes into that. So I don't really think that that's a very good argument as well, to support multi-grade classes. And, you know, just when you look at, like, the world we live in now is test scores. And I will tell you that although the study said there was statistically significant results, negative results, but none were practically significant. But in the case of my daughter, my daughter, she wanted to go to the STEM school, and she was, her math score was like 20 points higher than the threshold to get into the STEM school. Her reading score was one point lower than the threshold to get into the STEM school. Guess what? She's not even considered to be in the STEM school. So when you talk about, like, you know, that the differences aren't practically that big, I mean, it made a huge difference to my daughter, one point on her test. So I just want you to all acknowledge that. We're also a smaller school. We have a smaller base of contributors and our teachers. We have, now, we had 12 teachers, now we have 11 teachers to run reading night and math night and ABC Countdown and Marches Reading Month and tutoring and all those things. And other, other schools have more, and we know we have benefits of being a small school. But when you lose a teacher that has a much bigger impact on our small school, because now, like, that base is even smaller, and now, by the way, of those 11 teachers, two of them are teaching these double curriculums with all the other complications that I've mentioned, and being asked to step up and take on more committee assignments both at the school and within the district. So it's really, really having a disproportionately detrimental impact on our school. And I just hope that you can revisit that decision to reduce our, our teachers by one. Thank you. Thank you.
Next, Coco Dero, on the Duval Teacher Surplus.
Hello, it's me again. I would like to use my opening statements to make clear our arguments. These are legitimate and nuanced concerns that we see from our roles as parents and PTA members of Duval, roles which give us a bird's-eye view into our school. These are arguments, I'm sorry, these arguments are not an expression of subjective opinions, but an opportunity for you to listen and hopefully incite an extra effort to help us make our school a great place. Nervous.
It's okay. All right.
Take your time. You think I'd be used to it by now. Our teachers are an asset to our school. Any reduction in our teacher count will have a negative measurable impact. Duval is a small school. One teacher lost is slightly less than 10% of our teacher headcount. That loss is disproportionate to other schools' loss. The surplus teacher provides a considerable amount of grant money for our school that is now gone. The teacher you have surplus provides 25% of the tutoring. The surplus teacher served diligently on three committee positions, leaving a huge hole to fill. I'd like to jump in on that note. It is a requirement, to my knowledge, I hope I'm not getting this wrong, that each teacher serve in two committee positions. So she served in three, did a lot for it. For the school, with her absence, we now have 12 unfulfilled committee positions. This is a huge hole. This does not compare favorably. In an effort to fill that hole, one of two things will happen. One, our reduced staff will need to stretch themselves thinner to pick up the slack, filling a hole that a larger school could more readily absorb. Or, they cannot fill that gap, and the students' education will suffer. Our teachers, however exceptional as they are, are only human. You can ask someone to carry three pennies, and it would be a bearable load, but you cannot ask the same day in and day out for years before the weight is too much to carry. We believe in and support our teachers. As parents, we're putting in the extra effort and time to stack the deck in their favor so they can better do their jobs, and we need you to do the same. I'd like to segue to a quick comparison of Duval and Howard and their needs. If you're not aware, which I'm sure we've made everyone aware, we are losing the surplus teacher to Howard. That is why I'm comparing the two. Both are great schools, but some specific metrics set them apart. Howard exceeds Duval in proficiency for 2/3 of the enrolled kids by roughly 6%. That's not a ton, but it's more. Howard and Duval both share the same percentage of low-income kids, roughly about 30% of their enrollment. But Howard's low-income kids far exceed the state average for proficiency, whereas Duval's fall far behind that state average. And I have one metric, I'm sure you guys can look up more, but this one metric is pretty much indicative of what I'm talking about. So the state average for low-income kids is 25% proficiency. Howard's English scores are 44%, Duval's is 12%. So just to tie that into my earlier points about what we're losing with this teacher, like, those are the kids that are gonna be missing this effort that she brought. Why is Howard getting this teacher when it's clear we need her more? Why not an even more deserving school than us? Why are they not getting her or these resources? Duval has made remarkable progress in our low-income kids proficiency in the past years. We have a steady incline, something to be very proud of. But one could easily argue that cutting our teacher headcount, which reduces our grant money, decreases available tutors for the neediest kids, reduces extracurricular academic activities via unfulfilled committee positions, and increases teacher-to-student ratios, leaves Duval's most vulnerable kids at a disproportionate disadvantage compared to other kids in the district due to this one teacher's loss. We must acknowledge this and remedy this. These kids need the tutoring and resources the lost teacher provided. This must be taken into consideration. Low-income kids present a need for the most comprehensive help. Our schools' principal, the PTA, and the teachers put in extra effort, and we will continue to do so, but we are pleading with you to take action and join us. You know, something that occurred to me, was a small ad lib, is how much we, as parents, push our kids to go above and beyond, you know, and how much time we put into that, and how much we ask the, the teachers to go above and beyond. I mean, we all know they spend their own money and time outside of the classroom to make it great. I want you guys, we want you guys, we want to see you guys doing that with us. We want to see the help to make what's happening with Duval matter. It's easy to throw your hands up in the air, let the cards fall where they may, and point to the budget and shrug, but what makes a great community is when everyone goes above and beyond to find creative solutions to less-than-ideal circumstances. This is your opportunity to do just that. I'd like to thank the Director of Student Achievement and one of the Board members for their willingness to acknowledge these concerns and take the extra time in their workday to help us find solutions. Two of you have taken my call personally, but I hope that the ones that put in the extra effort can inspire the rest of the Board to go the extra effort as well. We're voicing real concerns to you all. The silence can be deafening, and inaction implies apathy. Thank you for your time.
Next is Catherine Dagger, wishing to speak to the Board about Duval Elementary.
Hello again. How you guys doing?
Good.
I'm good, I'm good. I'm not gonna cry this time, so we're good. All right. Thank you for allowing me to speak again tonight about our situation. Last time, I had the privilege to discuss the impact of losing this specific teacher over a surplus, but over the past month, I've had the time and resources and knowledge to contemplate and learn about how big this issue truly is for our school. So thank you for everyone who responded to my emails, my phone calls, and met me in person with us and all of us concerned parents, because right now, we're not just fighting for our one teacher, but we're just fighting for our school and to keep all of our teachers in general. So, we've been able to discuss, and as previous parents had said, we now have combined classes for second, third, and fourth grade at our school, which is gonna be split into five classrooms out of the 11. So as I have a third grader coming in, this is personally affecting myself and my daughter. So I would like to explain a little bit about what these third graders have already endeavored through their very short time at Duval. In kindergarten, there was an over-enrollment, unprojected amount of kindergartners. So a few months into school, we hired a new teacher, and kids got shuffled around. So my daughter was put into a K-1 split, and as a first-time parent of, this is my first kid, I knew nothing about splits, and I was jumping in, you know, feet-first. But halfway into the school, the teacher was diagnosed with cancer and had to take some time off, therefore leaving the kids with a permanent sub who was a retired teacher. And I'm not sure she was completely able and capable to handle these two grades. In first grade, the teacher was still out with cancer, so another permanent sub was put in place who was underqualified, inappropriate, and allowing kids to change answers on the tests. This was only caught more than halfway through the school year, when a student pointed it out to their parent, and soon after, when the original teacher returned to school, it was noticed and their test scores had dropped. Second grade was by far the best. It has been our only constant, and it was such a breath of fresh air to finally feel like, oh, this is what school is supposed to be like for my daughter. So, now onto third grade. I said I wouldn't cry, I said I wouldn't cry. Okay. It will be inevitable for my daughter to be in a split. This concerns me, because I saw her attitude and morale during the time that she was in the first split, and to be honest, it was hard to watch. She came home some days in tears. I knew she was not getting the attention or the learning that she deserved. My daughter is near the top of her class, so I worry that in a split, she will once again be pushed to the side. And once you combine all the behavior issues, the 504s, the IEPs, as well as the new third grade laws that we heard about, it will not be an easy task for even the most fantastic teacher. We have at least three teachers that I know of that are teaching new grades, new students, new laws, new curriculums, and those are only the teachers I know about, so there are probably some more. But if our projected numbers are incorrect, as we had pointed out earlier, once again, a new teacher will be brought in, and these kids will be shuffled around once again. So I think, I appreciate your question earlier as to if, you know, when do we recount and how quickly would a new teacher come in? Because I think that's important for these kids who have been shuffled around. And then to top this off, next year going into fourth grade, I'm sure the splits will exist again, because there's not gonna be a splurge of fourth or fifth graders coming in. So this will mean, and she will be in three split classes in the six years she attends Duval. This is unacceptable and unappreciated, but not just myself, but it should be for you as well. I had reviewed the statistics and the studies of the children in split classes, and maybe it doesn't show a big impact on their education, but the statistics do not explain kids in multiple splits within a short timeframe. Those are not the test subjects. So are there any tests of that? Because I've tried researching it, and there's, I haven't found any. When I was in high school, I was the first class to attend DCMS-T, and I take pride in the fact that my education system helped me to drive to do better. I cannot say the system is doing the same for my kids. I hope my daughter will someday get into STEM or DCMS-T or any other school that may be offered, but I'm concerned that she will not have the tools to get there on time. I know our teachers will give 110%, but the Board and district's actions are stacking the deck against them. So much as one point on the state test can deter that, as Robin had explained. So I ask you, if you were in my shoes, what would you do? Would you put your kid in extra tutoring just to make sure they go ahead? Would you put them in a different school, possibly in Montessori? Would you be standing here begging to allow good education? I can't, I just can't believe that this is acceptable. So I've had this discussion as to move and put our kids in different, different school districts, because as I weigh, as I see the way that teachers and students are mishandled. Do you think I would express this concern to other parents that decide to move here? Do you think teachers would express that to other teachers applying within our district? Do you believe it'd be tough to retain high-quality teachers when it is known that we surplus or let go of teachers who go above and beyond? How can we attract great talent when teachers have bad perspectives of Dearborn Public Schools? Maybe we should rethink our formula and how the humans in our districts are actually treated. So students first is our motto, and it's hard to believe when there's 117 teachers, 117 students at Duval getting shuffled around. So how can our district not provide a teacher that we obviously need at our school? So according to a news article, according to a news article about being Superintendent of the Year, congratulations, it explains how most respected by the solutions that you find. And unfortunately, the only solution we have been provided was to contact Lansing. Lansing has been contacted, promise. And in fact, when I spoke with one of our representatives on the phone, our teacher's name and Duval School is well-known and discussed throughout Lansing right now. So what are you doing to help us? I mean, we've done what you asked, we've done everything that we can do, but we don't feel like we're getting anything in return. So I truly hope that even before we get a budget, that we can think of a creative solution for us and make Duval somewhat on your priority list, because sometimes we just don't feel like it.
Just a quick question, Dr. Maleko. What is the current population, or what was the last year's population at Duval? Do you remember? Or Dr. Chokel, perhaps?
One of the things that happened, you'll get it, okay. And I can say that one of the things that we've done, and you guys are aware, is we spent a lot of time meeting and trying to explain, trying to work through things. Ultimately, the principal I know has, so has Dr. Chokel, so have I with your group. We're also, I'm up in Lansing advocating as well. So it's not just that we can do, you know, it's not just Lansing, it's also how we provide a quality education. So if there's some things that we can do with, you know, the principal there, Mr. Addy, you know, he's gonna provide support. So we'll continue to do that.
No, I just remember that Wafamaki was principal there. I mean, Duval is our smallest school. I mean, Duval is our smallest school. And Duval is hard to configure because of its size, because of its small size. But I remember Mrs. Mackey recruiting students to Duval. At one point, Duval was 180 students, which is just hard to configure them. I mean, what do we do? Have one classroom with seven kids, or a class with 26? I mean, it's hard to get the numbers to divide nicely, so. Pardon?
The principal, the last, you told me, was 265.
265. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to go, I was going to go ahead with the next one while Dr. Chokel's looking up that information.
Just quick questions, since Dr. Chokel's at a computer. 265, can you try to find out what the capacity is too, please? Thank you.
Next, Brianna Gross would wish to speak to the board about the Duval split classes.
Hi there. Can, I know there's like a lag, like, am I on?
No, yeah.
Okay. All right, I am Brianna Gross. I am the PTA president at Duval this year, and I have a son, Cohen, who will be in first grade. And he was at Duval last year in kindergarten. Many concerns have been brought up. I know that I have spoken to some of you. I appreciate the time that has been given to our concerns. One of my biggest concerns I have regarding these split classes is for our teachers. Now, don't get me wrong, I have full faith in our teachers. That has nothing to do with this. But I don't understand how we can put so much on these teachers and expect them to perform at the same level as other teachers who will only be teaching one class, who will have more resources available to them. And as was stated, we are left with open spots this year of committees that they have to fill, when this surplus teacher had filled multiple of these. Not only are these teachers now being asked to figure out to teach, how to teach two grades, but on top of that, make sure that you're at the PTA meetings and be there after school to help with this, this, and this. And from, like, with my knowledge, I don't believe that they're getting paid anymore. I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't see how that's us respecting our teachers and how we can continue to hold them to that standard. And I don't care how fantastic they are, there is a limit to what a teacher can do. And they will suffer, and I think students suffer. So, here we are, spending our summertime as Duval parents, trying to figure out plans for our school. We're serious about this, because you see moms here tonight who brought their little kids, and it's past nine o'clock. And I tell you, nothing is crappier than having little kids up till nine o'clock. My three boys are not here for that reason. But these moms, they brought them. And if anybody deserves a round of applause, it's for these kids who are sitting here doing so well. And these are the kids that we're here to take care of. They're the whole reason why we are standing up. And so, one of the things that stood out to me in this meeting tonight is, there was a question raised about the bond and how, you know, what's our plan B? We're not going to wait until, you know, we think it's going to work out, you know? But what's your plan B if it doesn't? We have to think about that. Okay, so, I'm sitting here, we're sitting here trying to figure out, okay, we hear students in seats, students in seats, you know, when we have to see on day one what, if students are going to be in seats, and we'll go from there. Okay, well, what's your plan after that? What is your plan for the students who are not in the seats, or if they are in their seats? What is your plan? Can I please have something with that? Is that too much to ask as parents, to at least give us some idea of what our future's going to be like, good or bad? And I have not received any of that, despite the meetings that I have had. And you know what? We are here, again, like I said, as parents in our summertime, working to have some change. What are you doing in the summertime right now? What are you guys doing to help us with this issue? We're working our butts off, and you know what? We voted for you guys. We put our faith in you, because we knew that you would back us up, because we knew that we could trust you. And we want to continue to have that trust in you. And that's why we come to these meetings and say, hey, can you help us out? Can you give us some information? And, you know, another thing that was brought up tonight is, it's all about relationships. Someone said, you know, it's about the relationships that we have. What are you doing with your relationships with people that we do not have relationships with? You're up here, you're board members, you have your contacts. What are you doing with that privilege of relationships to help us? Where's, what's going on with that? I'd be very interested to know that. I also wanted to add that I am grateful for board members who ask the hard questions that some people don't want to answer. And I've heard that tonight, and I am grateful for that, because sometimes you get put aside as asking one certain question, but we appreciate that. Also, with split classes, you talked about, a couple of you having children who have been in split classes, sorry. I am 5'2", and I'm on my tippy toes. So, if I'm shaking, that's why. I'm not nervous. But you have, some of you have, I've got to stop to the side. Some of you guys have had children in split classes. And you know what? I can't help thinking, of course, they made it through, and of course, you know what? They're taken care of, but look who their parents are. You're like either educators, or like boldly supporting your students. And of course, I have no doubt that any of us parents here would do the same if we were in that situation. But what about the student who doesn't have that? Because that's the reality of it. And I think it's even more so that there's less parents who are going to be like us. It doesn't matter where you are, there are always going to be some students who don't have the support. And so, they rely on you guys to help them out. We can't just assume that everything's going to work out in a split class, or that they're going to be in the same situation that your children were. Your children were a lot more privileged because of the education you have, because of the drive that you have to help your children. And I feel like that can't go unsaid. They are not here, or they are not to be put in split classes to learn leadership or maturity. I do not send my kid to school with that number-one thing in mind. That is a fantastic part about schools, that we get to learn those life skills, and that they're exposed to opportunities where they can grow in that way. But I'm sending my kid to school to get an education. I'm not sending them there to be able to be the good kid in class who, look at them, they're doing their work, while I'm taking care of the kids in the younger grade. And I don't think that that should be expected. And so, I don't think that even needs to be mentioned when we're talking about split classes. That's not what education is for, in my mind. That is not the only thing. So, I just ask that, as you guys are giving consideration to other topics, like the bond of your plan B, what's your plan B for us? Can we not wait? I mean, school's next week. Look, we waited long enough already this summer. We brought this concern to you last month. We've emailed you, we've brought these things to you. Can we not wait any longer to get a plan B? I know it's just one school. I understand it's a big district, but it's our school. And if every student counts, if every child is so important, then this school matters too. And so, please, please, help us by giving us some information of a plan that you have for Duval School. Please, reach out to your contacts that you have. We know you have them. Don't just wait, or say, you know, we're working in Lansing, or whatever. And when we meet with you, we appreciate that time, but we want to hear more about solutions, as opposed to Instagram posts and how many followers we have, or whatever is going on. We really want to get down to the main issue, and that is to take care of our kids and to stop this from continuing year after year. And I thank you guys for your consideration to my thoughts today.
Yes, Trustee Barry.
Ms. Groves, I feel like I have to say something here. My colleagues mentioned that they had their students in split classes when they were a lot younger, where they were actually sitting in those seats as PTA members when this happened. I'm trying to defend my colleagues, I just want to clarify that. When the borders changed last year, I personally, we don't have special privileges as board members. Just want to make sure that's out there. We feel your pain, I applaud your advocacy. I mean, I've seen all the emails, I've seen everything you're doing. We all applaud what you're doing. Just want to make sure that's clear. We don't have any special privileges as board members. I literally had to give up my comfortable condo, because my stepdaughter wanted to stay in the school that she liked to stay in. Had to buy a house in a completely different area, completely different area. It's just so, I don't want anybody to think that Hussein Barry got any special privileges, that's why his daughter is over at the school. So, not trying to contradict anything you said, but not to defend my colleagues, they can defend themselves, but I know personally that one of my colleagues, at least, when her student was in a split class, this is way before she was on the board and she was involved in the PTA. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Next, we've got two more from Duval that do not wish to speak, but would like to make the following comments. And these are from Megan Huskinson and Sarah, I apologize, I can't read the last name. I'm thinking Van Horn. Okay. Both of them have the same statement, which is, Duval is a small school, we need all 12 teachers.
Is that the?
That's the end with Duval. We've got one more, but do we want to?
Okay, yeah, I did want to make a statement. I had heard comments about, we're not going to go directly towards what's occurring at Duval, but about the communication between board members and yourself. There is a board philosophy that has been in place for many years, that we want to have one voice, and that we have a consistent message when a situation occurs that is communicated by a number of individuals. So, it's either the board president, which would be myself, or the superintendent, who would be responding to the emails, or any communications in regards to one thing. And that was a board philosophy for many, many years, we've been doing it this way. So that even though you may email individual board members simultaneously, you're not going to necessarily hear from them, because we've all agreed so that there isn't an inadvertent miscommunication from a board member who may say something differently than what the message is from the board as a whole. So, that being said, I directed Dr. Maleko to send out a communication to the Duval parents who messaged us, so that it would be a consistent message with the correct information when he responded on our behalf. And that is something that we do with all schools, when we have a communication of this nature. The other thing is, is that I don't think all of us were communicated with individually. I knew nothing about Trustee McDonald attending a meeting. None of us had that opportunity or invitation to come to Duval, because we were unaware of it. And that being said, we would be more than happy to meet there again. I would like for the meeting to be, in particular, when the teachers are there in the building, so that you can have a sense of understanding of how the classroom is going to look for your student. I can't give you the type of reassurance I know that you're looking for. And as Trustee Barry stated, we were all parents seated in your seat. I was a PTA president, I was on PTA council for many years before I sat in the chair here. I understand what it is to fight for a student's issues, and that you want to be assured that your students are not going to be left behind for whatever reasons. But I can also tell you that over the many, many years that I've been involved in the district, that a lot of the perceptions and fears need to be recognized, but then you also need to take the opportunity to explore what's going to occur in the building before you come to a decision. We all had worries over the years as well about our kids in split classes, or other, a change of administrators, of beloved administrators, or losing a teacher in the building that we really appreciated. But you have to recognize that there are some things that were legally, contractually, policy-wise, from the state obligated to fulfill. We don't have that luxury to be as flexible as you would like us to be. And I see the shaking of the heads, I understand that you don't believe that. But quite frankly, if we were to open that door, you would see every single building standing in line here, wanting some exception made for them as well.
Why are we the only school here when this is happening across the district? Is what we heard. Why are we the only school that is?
Because you've become advocates that feel you.
Like, you're not going to?
I'm not going to have a, excuse me. The opportunity to speak is when you come before. I can't have a conversation out to the audience, okay? I apologize, but that.
You're just going to be shaking my head, though.
No, I'm just, I'm, I can't have a conversation back and forth. You have to be at a microphone. Yes, I will allow you to come up to the microphone.
My name's Ma, and I'm on the PTA board, and I'm also a parent at Duval. First, I just want to clarify one thing. When we spoke about the privilege, it wasn't meant as a privilege of sitting on the board. I think we really need to understand, especially at a Dearborn Public School, where we've got families that either don't speak the language or don't have the same level of education that most of us probably in this room have. We have kids that are at Duval, like, we've heard it from some parent, from some teachers that come to school that didn't even have breakfast. So, I don't know, like, so the teacher is dealing with some sort of these issues? Like, you have kids coming to school where their parents, you have got like either divorced parents, or they've got some family circumstances where kids didn't sleep at night because dad wasn't at home, or something. They come, they didn't eat breakfast, they can't even focus. So, the teacher has to deal with these things, so the privilege comes from, I think, us as the parents, a lot of us, maybe for me, if I saw anything affecting my kids, I could hire a tutor, I speak the language, I can reach out to different. This is where the privilege come, from people that are able to be more involved. But when we look at the school community as a whole, we have a lot of students that are below the income, or they've got different circumstances where they don't have the privilege that a lot of us in this room have. This is where the privilege was meant, it wasn't like as a board. When we speak of the third-grade split, I am a mother of twin girls there in this room somewhere. Specifically, this class has been through a lot, so many changes. My kids went to Montessori school, they came to Duval, they could speak and read, and they were not even five years old. Their scores has dropped since they started school because of all the split and all the change in teachers. Even though I am very involved, and I've put them, I've spent, I honestly feel some time that I'm spending like on outside teacher, where I could just put them in a private school. But that won't go like for a long term. So, our concern is if we were to think of what these kids, and beyond just the education, what they're going through with having all this change, there's so much more effect on this third-grade split, especially with, like, there's a new math curriculum. The teachers were already, they're more than qualified, but it's completely different, like, the teachers were adjusting to this program, when the kids were not, still kind of like, they need time to catch up to this. They have switched probably four teachers between like kindergarten, first grade, second grade. Most of these students have had four teachers. So, there's so much concern, specifically like now going into a third grade, having a split class, or like if the number changes, then we shuffle these kids again. Like, when will, like, they switch teachers in the middle of the year, more than one time. Like, how many more times we're going to try out with these students? Third grade is very critical, there's a state law that we've been talking about. Like, if they don't pass, if their reading scores drop down, these kids could repeat. Or like, elementary is very important, that's the foundation for kids' education. This is where our concern is coming from. We're not asking, Duval, like, we don't even have a playground, we're like very small. We're not asking, Duval, like, we don't even have a playground, we're like very small. We don't have AC, we probably like just got like one filtered water, like throughout the school. We don't have any, like, what else? And now we're going to take our, like, one more teacher and put the kids through, this is where our concern. We believe in you, we believe you have the kids' best interests, but we've already, like, the PTA is very involved, we're always raising money to do things on our own. Like, we already have like the smallest budget out of all the schools. Like, what else can we give up? We don't have anything special, everything's old. Like, the PTA, I think, like, I think we're even going to pay for like one AC unit or one heat unit, like, we have something that we need to fix, the PTA is doing this.
Hey, I understand, and I am going to ask you for one thing for our minutes. Will you go around the corner and find a blue card and fill it out? So that we can have your name and address to add to it, since I'd like?
Sure, sure, but I just want, like, to clarify, it was, nobody meant in any way the, or like me and privilege.
And we wish, we wish we could give you the perfect answer, but right now, we're not, we're not in the position to, to go behind, but I hear, I hear, I hear the, I hear the pain in your voices. We recognize that the school.
As a mom, I'm very concerned, like.
Yes, we recognize that the school is challenged.
My kids already have so much in the house that they're dealing with, there's so many adjustments in my personal life with my children, and now to put them through this, this is really very concerning. Like, I just want them to have, I mean, I worked hard to be where I am now, I want the same for them. And we're there, we're involved, we're doing anything we can as a PTA, the whole, I mean, Duval is very well-known for our, like, our community, our parents are very involved. We support you guys, we, we want you to support us.
And we want, and we want you and your students to be successful and happy in your school environment as well.
Trustee Barry, did you have your hand?
Yes. I was in questioning how you used the term privilege. There's 50, 60 people here paying attention, we're all pretty much on the same page, but we also, believe it or not, there's probably hundreds, if not over 1,000 people watching us right now, and thank you for doing that. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, they understand what we were coming from. Regarding the emails, I did not answer any emails, I made sure you got a copy. I'm sure the parents probably thinking, what's wrong with these board members? How come they're not answering? I truly believe in that philosophy, that we do have a spokesperson, okay? I did, I was going to mention it under acknowledging of correspondence, that I did take a couple of phone calls and listen to the parents and, you know, thanked them for advocacy. Matter of fact, one of them, I said, there's going to be a school board election next year, it sounds like you'd be a perfect candidate. With that being said, do we have a count and a capacity, Dr. Chokel? Did we find out the numbers?
Dr. Chokel, did we get the numbers for the?
Please.
Yes, please, okay.
Can I add one last thing?
Yes, please, quickly.
One, like, one, back to the point of the privilege, this one specific teacher tutors a lot of students for free, for these kids that either have non, like, parents that don't speak the language. She provides so much to our school. So this is why, I mean, we're not asking for any, like, things extra, but she really does go above and beyond. She does so much for the students. I mean, she tutored one student at home.
To be honest with me, I'd love to meet this teacher, because I'd love to clone her, to be honest with you.
Yeah, she's, she's went to us, she's, she's been to us, one of our students' house to tutor her. Like, this is how above and beyond.
We love our teachers.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Cho.
Okay, last year in the spring, it was 254, that was the overall enrollment, and that was a ratio of 21.16, K5. Currently, the projection is 257. As of the end of last week, the numbers that Mr. Addy recorded were 259. So right now, we are two students above the official projection, which gives us a ratio of 23.5. The ideal size, capacity for the building is 300, the maximum capacity is 350.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Chokel.